Time is seven o'clock and we'll call the Board of the City Council Meeting for October 23rd, 2017. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Cheek of the High Point Nazarene Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please stand.
Thank you, Lord, for a wonderful opportunity to be together. We thank you for your love, for goodness. I especially want to thank you for a beautiful fall that we've had this year, with weather color. We thank you for that. And now I pray your blessings on this meeting, where all the businesses transacted. We pray for our city. We pray for our leadership and pray that you would give wisdom and discernment and courage to do what's right. And we pray, Lord, that you would have your way in our city in the name of Jesus. We pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Pastor Cheek. Item four is the approval of motion summary of the regular meeting of council held October 9th, 2017, as recorded and transcribed. What is the wish of council?
Move the approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Item A is the consent agenda. You may please read this from the record.
Item A: Acceptance of the motion summary for the Sister City Advisory Board Meeting held July 11th, 2017. Item B: Acceptance of the motion summary for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting held August 15th, 2017.
Move the approval of consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item six on the agenda is time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here in the audience for something that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none, Mayor.
Mrs. Keller?
I have none.
Mr. Brownie?
Parks and Recreation, there's a growing demand for pickleball. A lot of our conversation around pickleball.
Yeah, great pickleball parks, yeah.
And they're wanting more.
Oh. Mr. Rohr?
I have nothing.
Mr. Hellinger?
Nothing.
Mr. Schaefer?
Nothing.
Okay. We'll move on to presentations. Superintendent Paul Kraft, if you'll come forward, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope you all have a presentation in front of you. I'd like to take a few minutes to walk you through some of those slides. I promise not to go in exhaustive detail. So I'll refer to these by top and bottom of each slide. So top one is just our my contact information and our mission statement, which we haven't changed for over a decade because I think it's so good. We talk about getting our kids ready to go out and face the challenges of a global society. My oldest son is a researcher at Batel, and when he and his team are going out for contracts now, they're competing against teams not from just around the United States, but from Asia and Europe as well. And that's the world we're getting our kids ready for. I also love the second part of that mission statement when it talks about our traditions. You know, 1808 isn't just a good restaurant. It's how long this city's been around. Last summer's, last spring's graduation was our 150th consolidated collective high school graduation. You know, so when you think of Owen Tangi and Valley in the 40s and Upper Arlington, who thinks they're all that in the 80s, you know, have them call us in 70 more years to have the traditions that we have. Great diversity in the city. You know, we're a little snapshot of Ohio, which is a snapshot of America, and such amazing partners, including our partnership with the City of Delaware. Bottom of page one talks about the, some demographics. We have 5,800 students in grades pre-K through 12. When I came eight years ago, we were under 5,000. So we've been growing about 100 kids a year, and that's going to continue, it looks like, for about the next decade. We're about 33% free reduced lunch, which peaked at almost 40% during the recession. That's actually dropped almost 3% in the last year, and I think that reflects the economic situation in our community, the low unemployment, and just the opportunities there for our residents. We're 17% minority, with 6% being multiracial, 5% African-American, and about 5% Hispanic, with that Hispanic number having almost tripled in the last three years. We've seen a real influx of students enrolling with Hispanic heritage. And about 15% of our students are students with an identified disability. The top of page two talks about the journey we've been on, and it's been a great one, as has this community. Over the course of, in 1999-2000, when the state started its testing program, we were in the second lowest category. We were rated Academic Watch. There were about 60 districts in Academic Watch that first year. The district quickly moved into continuous improvement and through continuous improvement into the effective category, moved through the effective category, actually skipped a category called Excellent, and jumped right up to the category called Excellent with Distinction. For the last four years of the old system, it met the criteria for Excellent with Distinction. If you go back to those 60 districts that were in Academic Watch with us back in 1999-2000, you can count the number of districts that went on to four straight years of Excellent with Distinction on one finger. That's a subset of one, and it's the Delaware City Schools. They then kind of blew the report card up, but looking at the same two things that went into the reports above, achievement and student growth, even this last year, we had a C on achievement, which doesn't sound very exciting until you realize that that put us at or above 89% of the districts in the state of Ohio. And we had a B in student growth, but when you actually look at the, that puts us in the top 79%. If you look at the actual overall growth number, it put us in the top 80% of districts in the state of Ohio. The top of page three talks about some of the other highlights that are out there. In addition to that growth, which is the seventh of eight years that we've been well above the state in terms of growing kids, we had a graduation rate last year, our five-year graduation rate of 95.7%. The state average is 85.7%, so percent higher. Just not giving up on kids. When we think back to the glory days of American education in the 50s or 60s, we had graduation rates of 60%. We were writing off 40% of our Americans in terms of getting them through high school graduation. You know, to be at 95.7%, and we're not done. We're pushing to get that even higher. But on the top end, you see that our ACT scores versus the national average of 21, the state average of 22, was a 23.3. That 23 is kind of that mark for, hey, these kids are fully college-ready. So that tells you that the average kid taking our ACT is fully college-ready, which is much higher than the national and state percentage. Bottom, we're growing enrollment. We were 3,700 kids in 1990. We grew about 400 in that subsequent decade. From 2000 through 2010, we grew about 800. We're in the midst of a decade where we're growing by about 1,000 students. We see that continuing through about 2025, and then we should start to see some limits to our growth as some of these newer neighborhoods start to age out in terms of the percentage of kids, our number of kids coming from each home, and we start hitting some of the boundaries on our growth versus growth that happens outside of the school district. We think we'll peak somewhere in that 6,800-6,900 range, which would put us a little bit below Gehanna. We think still a single high school district, a large single high school district, but I think we'll, which I sure hope is the case. I love having a district, a single high school district that's, boundaries are very close to the city boundaries. It gives a sense of cohesiveness in this community that I absolutely love. The top of page four talks a little bit more about the enrollment going on. It actually shows the 88 counties in the state of Ohio. And of those 88 counties, you'll notice that 85 of those counties are tan or red. And that means that during that eight-year period from 2006 through 2014, 85 of the 88 counties in the state of Ohio lost student enrollment. And that's continuing. You see three counties that grew enrollment. You see Fairfield County by a little less than 1%, Warren County by almost 5%, and a dark green county by the name of Delaware by 37%. It makes us unusual, and we know that. In fact, looking at projections of overall population, the state's going to grow about 50,000 residents between now and '25, as will Delaware County. I mean, we are the net growth. There's some pluses and minuses within counties, but we're going to continue that growth. It's a great problem to have, but it does bring its challenges. One of that is telling our story to the state legislators, because most of them represent districts that are going down in enrollment, and they're worried about hanging on to the funding they've got. Much, they're not as worried about districts like us in Owen Tangi and soon Big Walnut, you know, that are growing so quickly. If you look on the bottom of page four, you see the central Ohio unadjusted student spending for 2016-2017. And it's a listing of all the major districts, so districts with over, just under, right around 2,000 students enrollment. You can see the Grand View Heights and Upper Arlington at 16,000 or 15,000 per pupil. You go through Columbus and Beckley and Marion, Wellington, Dublin. You work it down to the state average of 11,500. And then you go to Westville, and you start seeing some of the Delaware County schools. If you've not yet found Delaware cities because you haven't gone down far enough, you'll notice that we're second to last on that list of major central Ohio districts. And the only district is Realmsburg. And if you've watched it all, Realmsburg just went through a divisive teacher strike year before last. And last year, they fired their superintendent, which we are opposed to in Delaware.
Yes.
At least in my household. But it tells you what life is like down there. Our staff has actually been incredible as we've had to make the adjustments. Our class sizes have been going up. We've had to freeze base salaries two of the last six years, and our staff has been amazing at helping us to live within our means as we've dealt with the growth and the flat state and local funding. The top of page five has our spending in the five categories that the state tracks. About 10% below the state average in instruction. We're about 14% below the state average in building operations, which includes maintenance, transportation, keeping the lights on and the heat on. We're about 15% below in administration, 17% below in pupil support, which are school nurses and guidance counselors and those kind of things, and a full 41% below the state average on staff support. And part of that is we've just, you know, we're so close to central Ohio that we do all of our PD local. We don't, we're just not doing the overnight trips or national conferences for either the board or for our teaching staff. We've had to use what sources we could locally. On the bottom of page five, it kind of lays out our current situation. Despite being at the bottom per pupil spending amongst major Ohio, central Ohio districts, and despite class sizes that have really crept up, when I came, we were, we scheduled kindergarten classes at 18 or 19. We now set those at a minimum of 25. Not because we think that's best educationally, it's what we've had to do financially. And we're scheduling high school classes as high as 35. Despite all that, we're facing an $18 million deficit in the 2020-2021 school year, and that's why the school board made the difficult decision that it made. The top of page six shows our five-year forecast cash balance. Unlike the federal government, we cannot print money, so we're below. So you see that we crossed below that in the, right between the 2018 and the 2019 fiscal year. Well, this is school year 2017-2018. This is fiscal year 18. Next year is fiscal year 19. So we were faced with some pretty major cuts from a very low level of spending, or going back to our voters, and the board made the decision to go back with a five-year emergency operating levy. It'll be listed at 8.35 mils and will bring in $6.2 million per year. The cost is around $24 per month per $100,000 of a home value, although it illustrates one of the challenges of school funding. Auditor Kaitse has already told us that it will never be free. First year of collection, it looks like it will be collected at 7.6 mils, because our voted millage rolls back to counteract the valuation increases that our residents receive. They did that in the high inflation 70s to stop 20 and 30% increases in taxation. What it is, though, for growing districts like ours is we do have to return to our voters from time to time. I think that helps in accountability, but it makes for a hard story to tell for our voters when they say, why are you coming to us again? This should bring us to a positive fund balance for at least three years, but that's the same promise that we made when we went out six years ago, and we will certainly look to do that. The top of page seven and the bottom of page seven both have kind of what's at stake. Sometimes when you have a levy like this, your school board will take an action, and they'll say, if we fail the levy, the cuts will include A, B, and C. Our school board has not done that, has never done that. Interestingly, this time, it wasn't something that they even needed to deal, because when we submitted our five-year forecast with an $18 million deficit, the state auditor's office has a program where they come out and do a performance audit of your district, and they're selecting those districts with these large deficits. And they came out and they, you can actually go to the auditor website and see their report, but they listed what it would take to balance our budget without additional. It included the elimination of as many as 42 teaching positions, which we have just over 300 teachers. So that's significant. But it's actually worse than that, because about 70 of our teachers are special ed teachers who are already at the federal maximum. So really, you're cutting 40 from about 250 teachers. But it's actually worse than that, because we have some elementaries where we only have three sections. So say you're Woodward Elementary with 75 kids spread across three first-grade classrooms. You can't theoretically eliminate one of those teachers and go to 37 and 1/2 first graders in a class. First, it annoys the family whose kid you split in half. But it also means you've got 37 year-olds and 7-year-olds in a classroom. If you spent time around one or two 7-year-olds, that's challenging enough. 37 means we're not able to individualize the instruction that, the way that we need to do, as we have kids from so many varying backgrounds and varying needs. So when you actually go to cut 40 staff members, literally, this is something that keeps me up at night, because if I make the mistake of thinking about this, I can forget about sleeping, because I don't know how to do this. In addition to the 40 teaching positions, they listed 16 educational support positions, which included administrators, librarians, guidance counselors, kind of things. Their first recommendation that Auditor Yost made was the elimination of all general financial resources being devoted to any of our extracurricular activities. And what he suggested, either we eliminate those extracurricular activities, or we go to pay-to-play fees of $500 or $600, $700 per sport. Some things would not be able to be saved, even with pay-to-play. And even the ones that could be saved, we know what those things would be. I watched a young man walk across Starfield last summer and graduate. And it was exciting, because much of the last five years, I wanted to grab him and shake him, because the only time he would get his GPA up above a two-point would be in time to make the wrestling team. And then he would be a booger the rest of the year, and then around, you know, it would come time for wrestling, and he would get his GPA back up. But that was enough for us to build some support in around him, and with some extra push at the end, he was able to get across that field and graduate. Those stories are repeated anecdotally again and again, but more broadly, it's just what those extracurricular activities do in terms of getting our young men and young women ready to go out and be what we need them to be as workers, as students, as adults going forward. We spend 2% of our budget on that. I know we get so much more than 2% of the growth. You know, I had the chance to be at the play this week. If you didn't get a chance to see Arsenic and Old Lace, you missed a good one. Put November 17th and 18th on your calendar, because we're doing the middle school play, which is Peter Pan, and we're going to fly middle school students around the stage. We're thinking about doing free attendance, you know, free admission for lawyers and insurance adjusters to be a part of that, because what could go wrong? But it should be a great chance. And if you don't make it to the musical, but all those extracurricular programs, whether it's Destiny's Imagination and Suzuki Strings at the elementary, it's our music, our theater, our sports programs at the middle and high school. Those are the kind of things that the board would have to consider cutting in the absence of this levy, even though we don't have enough cuts. So we left a menu of some other things from which to choose. The bottom of page seven shows that same graph that you saw before, which is all those central Ohio districts. Keeping constant $20, $16, so unadjusted for inflation, just adjusting for the cuts we'd have to make and the additional 300 students enrollment. What you see is what our projected per pupil spending would be versus those others. So no longer are you near the bottom. We're so far below, we can't see the next. And what I like to say is, one of those districts on that list does not look like the others. And unfortunately, that would be the case. One of those districts on the list would not look like the others in terms of what we can do for kids. The levy is all about keeping us at the very bottom, and a no vote is saying, hey, I know we're at the bottom in terms of what we spend on our kids, but we feel our kids really deserve even less than that. As I knew, often I get a chance to talk to a group of parents and students, and those are easy stories to tell. I tried to include a few points about what it means for all of us, whether we have kids in the schools or not. And you guys have seen some of these things. You know, when SmartAsset.com put out, it's listing the best counties in the country back in the spring. Out of 3,400 counties and parishes, Delaware County was listed number nine in terms of economic opportunity, home values, and quality of the schools. And just a few weeks ago, when Money Magazine listed the 100 best places to live in the United States, four of those were Ohio communities, and two of those were right here in Delaware County, Powell, Ohio, and a little city we like to call Delaware City. That's the kind of thing that this matters for everybody. If you picture in your mind those communities in which you'd like to live, one thing they have in common is quality, well-supported schools. It matters in other ways. It matters in terms of property values. The bottom of page eight shows data from a Columbus Dispatch story from May of 2017. They just looked at average home sale from January to April of 2016 versus January to April of 2017. And within the city limits, where the average home value or the average home sale increased 10%. Auditor Kaitse put out his data on valuations. The equity of the, you know, the 40,000 residents in Delaware increased by $88 million from the previous valuation to this valuation. That's home equity and the biggest investment that most people have. So we know that it matters. The top of page nine is a slide that my communications director told me never to try to explain. But for you number types, I just wanted you to show the numbers. If passing versus not passing a levy makes only 0.33% difference in property value in years, you have a positive rate of return in terms of the money that you will invest. And we know that quality, well-supported schools have much more impact than 0.33% a year in terms of what's happening to your property values. You know, even if it's a 1% difference, that's a 300% return on investment, which is a little better than you're making in passbook savings. So I think it makes sense, whether you have kids in schools or whether you're just, you know, a resident who's fiscally conservative, I think this is an issue that makes sense for us as a community, certainly for our students. I end with that same slide that, you know, was actually on Tuesday, showing some of the major districts of central Ohio in terms of what they're spending per pupil and what our spending per pupil would have to go to in the absence of this levy. And, you know, it ends with the statement that we can't afford to fall further behind. Again, the board is always reluctant to go back out to our voters. In this case, we felt we've done everything we can in terms of watching our spending and had waited as long as we can, but we find it vital. So I'll open myself to any questions that you might have, but I certainly want to end with urging your personal support for this levy. So any questions?
Well, if the amount of signs out there is any, whether it's in the past, I think you can sleep at night. No problem. I've never seen this many school signs.
Two-thirds of these go down in the state of Ohio. Two-thirds of new money levies for schools go down. So, yeah, I don't know that I'll ever sleep well until November, probably 8th, even the 7th. We tend to get back up and keep checking the results, no matter how they are.
With all the additions to the new schools and the growth that we're still seeing, how long is it going to be before we outgrow what you just completed?
We actually feel pretty good. Not that we won't get tight at a few of the buildings, with the exception of Schultz Elementary. We think everywhere else, we're in pretty good shape. Schultz never stood down during the recession. I mean, for those, you know that those, that construction never stopped there. And so we're actually ahead of our projections for Schultz. Everywhere else, we think we've got the room with some adjustments. And at the end, when you start really getting towards your peak, it gets tight in terms of you don't have designated music rooms and art rooms, those kind of things. We're going to have to address the Schultz attendance area over the course of the next few years. We think the other six buildings are in good shape to weather the rest of this increase.
Any questions? I have one.
Okay.
What can we do to help you? I know that I will for sure be voting for this and encouraging all my friends to vote for this, but I'd love to do more to help.
That's the big, getting your friends out. These, you know, off-year elections, as you know, since some of you are on the ballot, tend to be lower turnout. The electorates tend to be older, more fiscally conservative, and at least in times, less supportive of school levies or have fewer kids at home, those kind of things, or less connected to the schools. So this is all about getting our supporters out. If we get our supporters out, we'll be fine on November 7th. So it's telling the story. It's spreading the word, you know, however you can, and social media is a big part of that. But really, that day, you know, and between now and then, you know, go drive up to Big Lots. It's the door right next to Big Lots. I voted early the other day, and it was five minutes in and out. It was amazing. We just need, you know, those people, you know, who care about the funding for our schools to get out and vote. So just help us spread that word.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the time. I really appreciate it. I'm going back to my meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to jump down to number 10, which is a 720 public hearing. Elaine , if you'll, please read this from the record.
Ordinance number 17-64. An ordinance approving the amendment to petition for expansion of the Northern Community Authority and make related findings provide the method of selecting the Board of Trustees of the New Community Authority and define the boundary of the expanded New Community District.
Thank you. Mr. Solomon?
Dave usually takes lead on these.
Yeah, I thought you were both like, everyone was teaming this one. And Mayor, members of council, I think you've seen this before. We're in this process that's required by Ohio Revised Code to take the final formal steps to expand the Northern New Community Authority area. The millage is already in place by declarations. It's already been collected by those declarations, but this just finishes the revised code process. So we'd recommend, I'm happy to answer any questions, Mike.
Any questions for Dave? That's wish of council.
Is this the public hearing?
Yeah.
No, I guess we should do that.
Yeah. I doubt there's a lot of people here.
Are you sure? Come on, let me ask.
Give them a chance.
We'll open the public hearing. Anybody want to come forward at this time? There he is. He wants to come forward. We'll close the public hearing.
I just wanted to point out to the council, who knows this, but also the public, who may not, that this is a mechanism that the city put in place over 10 years ago to help growth pay for itself. And when residents ask the question, what is the city doing to address its road system, we're trying to do as much as we can. This is an example of using a mechanism that a lot of communities around central Ohio, Ohio, use to pay for new construction. And this, in particular, is going to be used, is going to be used for the Glen Road construction. The new section of Glen Road from 3637 up to Mill Run Crossing was funded in part mostly by New Community Authority charges, which are paid for by the businesses and the residents in that area. That also is taking place in the southern end of the city, where we have another new community authority put in place, really raises the same amount of millage to pay for new road construction. So you try to use those tools as best you can. You can't use them for existing roads. You can't use them for maintenance, unfortunately. You can use them for new construction. So this is an example of us trying to use those tools to help make growth pay for itself. With that, I recommend your approval of the ordinance before you.
I'm going to spin the rules requiring free meetings and audits, number 17-64.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move the approval of the 17-64.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 11 now, which is the 725 public hearing. Elaine, if you'll read this from the record.
Ordinance number 17-61. An ordinance amending the neglect of companion animal section of the Animal and Pals chapter of the General Offenses Code.
Would you like to take this one?
This one, I am ready for.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the draft you have in your packet is basically the same draft that we've been considering. draft that we've been considering since it started. However, in talking to Chris Ballard, who helped me write it, it was getting kind of clunky with the strike-throughs and the bolds, and it was getting kind of confusing to read. And there was a paragraph that probably made sense to move, so it read better. So you now have a clean version where we'll pull out the entire existing section and drop in this new section. But substantively, the current draft should be the same as the other drafts. You'll also note in your packet, based on the feedback that some members of council shared last time, we've drafted two potential amendments that are not part of the ordinance, but rather than have to draft on the fly, we kind of took some time and crafted them based on some comments that we were getting. We didn't have a vote, but we want to at least present them if you were inclined to want to adapt them into the proposed ordinance. The first one is our attempt to basically say you cannot tether a companion animal if it's not attended. And then the second one is you can't tether a companion animal if it's not attended between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. We kind of heard both concepts, so we kind of gave you two options. As I shared last meeting, the defining unattended companion animal is the most difficult part of this because there was different, oh yeah, obviously if it's unattended, but then everyone had a different definition in their head of what they meant by unattended. So there is no other code that we could find that addressed it that way, so we just did the best we could. But procedure-wise, if somebody wanted to add one of these two approaches in, they make a motion, second it, you'd have a vote, and then if it's successful, that would become part of the overall ordinance that can be passed. And I can help you through the parliamentary procedures to make that happen if council's inclined. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? At this time? Mr. Jones, are you ready to have a statement? You look like you are.
Oh, I always have a statement. But no, no, I just, for me, it's overwhelming response regarding the amendment of not tethering between 10:00 and 6:00. So that would be the, you know, I personally like to know tethering in general, but my consensus is I'm not going to get that support. So, you know, so I would take the 10:00 to 6:00, but that'd be the amendment I would be pushing for. It's going to come ahead this time, but I'm sure there's some public comment out there. I think we've all got all these emails. It seems to be the sentiment as well between 10:00 and 6:00.
And then the only thing I will add, if that's the approach council's considering, is I did build in, I'll call it the Councilman Roar rule, where it does the 15-minute grace period for letting your animal out to go to the bathroom, because I know you mentioned it should be at least the 15 minutes, so that is in there if you were inclined to go that way.
We will open this up to the public. If there's someone here that, we've heard a lot from a lot of you before, so if you just don't repeat yourself to save time tonight, but if there's someone in the audience that would like to come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Shannon Roof, 248 Westwood Avenue, Delaware, Ohio. I just wanted to state, I know I've emailed you guys like crazy, so I'm probably, I'm sure you're probably sick of listening to me, but a new thing I did find out, I originally said there was 14 cities in Ohio, there's 19 actual cities in Ohio. I know I emailed you the ordinance that passed in Columbus, which I was so happy about. And I know I did bring this up one time, but I was really nervous, so I'm not sure how far I got with it. But I know one of the concerns with the, in Columbus, was the dog fighting and how that was going to cut down on them for there to be a limited time limit, you know, for dogs to be out. And I just feel like that is hugely important in this, not only as the care of the dogs, which I'm not going to repeat because I know we did get a lot of that, but where do you think like the dog rings are going to go once they're not allowed to do it in Columbus City? Once there's a time limit, they're going to go to the closest city there is without an ordinance of care and time limits and stuff like that. I did talk to Rodney Jordan, the Delaware County Animal Control Officer, and he stated that he felt that this would actually be good and it would actually cut down on their nuisance calls once the, you know, the rush at the beginning was over. He felt that they, that it would cut down. He said they got quite a few nuisance calls of working and stuff, so I think that was a plus. I did send to all the cities that were bigger and larger and smaller that are doing it. That's about all I have to say that, so I don't repeat myself. But if there's anything else that you guys need from me, like, I know I've had a lot of support, and if I need to get petitions, I have tons of people that are willing to do that. I did have one concern, and I wanted to bring it up. I have a lot of supportive people saying, just go take the dog. Give me the address, I'll go take the dog. I haven't given the address out, I don't feel like that's right. And although this did come, you know, go across my brain, like, why not just take the dog? The moral part of me was said, no, like, there's no way that I could do that. It's somebody's animal. I want them to have a chance to correct what is wrong and be educated on, you know, the damage they're doing before something like that, that happens. I don't want people running around Delaware taking dogs. So I would rather a time limit be in the ordinance so that dogs are properly taken care of than go stealing dogs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else now that would like to come forward on this?
Hi, my name is Ross C O R L, 363 Linwood Street here in Delaware. I would just like to tell you how proud I was to be a resident of Delaware when you passed the circus, the no circus ordinance. I screamed out in glee that you looked past revenue and you looked past voting and you saw animals and even people that needed your support in this. The same goes for this. There are animals out there that need our help, and it's up to us. We have to look at ourselves in the mirror. We have to be able to sleep at night knowing we've done everything we can to help the animals that can't speak for themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. What are you looking at me for? I can't make a motion.
No, I, I thought you were going to say something.
I could say something.
Go for it.
I'm currently undecided, and here's why. So I'd just, I'd love just be able to have a discussion to help me make some decisions. I was driving through my neighborhood and noticed that there was a German Shepherd tethered in a backyard. And I could tell from the wear marks in the grass that he was probably out there quite a bit. And so I kind of stopped a little bit and just observed, and I saw this dog playing with a ball, and he looked pretty happy and well taken care of. And I know that there are plenty of other stories where that is absolutely not the case. What I can't wrap my brain around is why the 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. time makes a difference. If the same dog was out there playing with that same ball at midnight because the owners worked an opposite shift, would that be wrong? And that's what I'm struggling with. Now, if he was out there barking, that's already in the current ordinance. If he was being mistreated in some way because his food had maggots or because his collar was too tight or any of those other thresholds of abuse, it's already covered. So it's only the act itself of being out there, a well-cared-for dog, potentially, just outside tethered at midnight, would be a crime. That's where I can't, in the best possible scenario, can't see why we would do that. But I'm open to...
And I know as I walk throughout all areas of the city, there's dogs tethering everywhere. I mean, and again, to your point, if you're worried about neglect, you're worried about nuisance barking, all those things are already covered. And, you know, either way, it's complaint-driven. You know, we're not going to have our police officers going around looking for tethered dogs and, you know, so it's all going to be complaint-driven, which is what it is today. So, yeah, I don't know what we gain. I think we're just enforcing laws earlier today. And if the people that have concerns with it, call in and again, because, you know, it's reaction, obviously. You know, somebody has to call in and make their complaint, this dog's out there barking. Okay, somebody's going to go out, you know, police officer, when they're free, will go out and look at that, but...
Why is what we have in at what, in the case of Shannon's situation with the dog that's of concern there, is there something that we don't have in our law that's not protecting that dog? Or is it just that we're not enforcing the laws that we already have?
Well, Darren, can you answer her question first?
Well, I was going to answer a question and ask a question. Council McKeller, are you referring to the base ordinance or the potential amendment?
Either one. We made the amendments make it a lot stricter, correct?
The amendments, so I'll sort of set the larger stage and then turn it over to whoever wants to speak. When Chris and I looked at the original ordinance, we feel the existing no change ordinance has all, if not most, of the elements...
Excuse me, Darren, Chris Ballard.
Chris Ballard, sorry. Not Chris Jones, sorry. Chris Ballard, my assistant city attorney. We felt that the existing ordinance has a lot of the protections in there. But, so if we did nothing, I think you could still...
When you say the existing, you mean the one that's already on the books?
The one that's already on the books has, you know, as we mentioned, we got barking already, we have, you can't mistreat the animals. But as we heard through testimony, there are some areas that could be tightened up. And so we drafted the ordinance as the safest, most geared towards not having a major unintended consequences. So we added the definition of shelter to make it a little bit more clear what shelter is. We kind of tightened up, you know, before we couldn't have it exposed to harsh weather, but we kind of tightened up what that meant. So we, we've tried to improve it so that it's a little bit more enforceable and understandable. So in terms of existing ordinance, I think you have stuff there. In terms of the existing proposed ordinance, I think I'm pretty confident saying it does no harm. I think we've limited the unintended consequences and tightened it up a bit to make it a little bit more protective for our animals. In terms of the amendments, those take a big policy change. So whereas before we're tightening up and kind of making it a little bit more clear, those are, now you can't tether your animal during certain hours at night. We did not put those in the original warrants because we felt like those were, we didn't have enough betting to know what would happen. We heard a lot of people saying, well, I have my dogs tethered at night when they have to go to the bathroom, and we just couldn't get our heads around, it's a different kind of regulation as opposed to the, we got to make sure the conditions are good for it. Now you're doing a timeframe, I think that's something you picked up on. The way we wrote it, I don't think it has, I think it's pretty tight. It would be a little difficult to enforce in terms of, you're going to go to a house, if it's unintended, what does that mean? You got to knock on the door to see if someone's there. If you wake them up to come to the door, they're going to say, oh yeah, I was awake. So it's going to be kind of hard to enforce that, but it's, it's a start. If they're not home at all, that's pretty easy to enforce. But policemen are going to be knocking on people's doors at night if they get calls. So I guess if you ask sort of the continuum, existing ordinance has a lot of protections, but they might not be as used. The existing amendment tightens it up, and I think it does know what we can observe are unintended side effects. And then the potential amendments go a step further, and that's, you know, I've been made fun of me many times, I'm not a dog person, so I don't know whether there's any legitimate purposes to tethering a dog, but that's a whole policy change because now you can't do it at night. Does that help answer your question from a legal perspective, Lisa?
Yes.
I realize that was really long, but we put a lot of time into trying to figure out.
To Lisa's point, the animal that's out there, 10 to 6. So if, basically, if we adopt this amendment, if somebody tethers their animal outside and they're not home during 10 to 6, or they leave it out longer than 15 minutes, it's a violation. But if they have a fenced-in backyard and you leave it out there, it's not.
Correct.
So...
Or an invisible fence?
Yeah. If we're trying to prevent abuse of the animal, I think we've already accomplished that without going further to start restricting hours and those kinds of things. You know, I'm hoping to do everything we can to protect the animal, but we're basically dictating a lifestyle based on something we feel that shooting through the chamber of fence is okay or an invisible fence is okay. I just think that's a bit of an overreach.
And one thing I will also point out to council, council, the two council members who just spoke, we did provide a pretty robust definition of what shelter is. We had testimony prior that shelter might have been determined as being under a tree or under a half-over wheelbarrow. So we based that as a streamlined version of what I think Cleveland's code had, but it's pretty specific in terms of you have that floor two inches off the ground and it has to be, and that, I don't know about dog houses, but that makes sense because if it's wet and cold on the ground, your dog's sitting in it, that's probably not good for the animal. So it makes sense, but that is substantive change to what we have now.
Thank you. Yes, Shannon, you can come forward.
To answer some of your questions, the ordinance changes, I believe, are just wording for the most part, honestly. The dog that I'm talking about is not going to be helped by this ordinance. She has a doghouse. A rickety one at that. The floorboard looks wet all the time. There's no straw, no pillow, no nothing. She is out there 24/7. If she had a ball, she'd probably be playing with it because she has no human contact. What I'm trying to prevent is them to have, you know, not to go day in, day out, every minute, every second, every day, not having any contact but with themselves and when food is poured in their bowl. You know, that's great that the dog has a ball to play with, but wouldn't you think I'd be rather go inside at some point during the day and spend time with their owner or have their owner come out there? And maybe the owner does go out there. I'm not saying about this. This is complaint-driven. This is extreme cases. I would love to videotape 24 hours, seven days a week of this dog so you people can see what I see every single day. Every day when I go by, she is itching and digging, or she's laying outside shaking. I mean, it's like, I don't think you understand, I'm not doing this to hurt people or to, you know, restrict people of, you know, taking care of their dog the way they want. I have a big dog, you know? He's in the house. I know some people don't like big dogs in the house. I mean, he sheds more than anything I've ever seen, but, so, I mean, some people don't like that, and they keep their dog outside. And that's fine, but a lot of people forget about their dog being outside, and their lives get busy, and then the dog's tied up all the time. This dog is not going to be helped by your ordinance at all because she has a doghouse. It's a piece of crap doghouse, and it's always wet, it looks like, but it's a doghouse. So you guys are talking about changing this ordinance to have vet care, and it's got to have this, and it's got to have this, and it's got to have this. Is everybody in the city of Ohio supposed to call and say, hey, I don't think my neighbor's taking vet care of my dog? Because I guarantee the dog down my street doesn't have flea or tick preventative because she's digging all the time. So if people are required to bring their dog in from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., they're probably going to give it flea care, flea preventative and tick preventative, and they're probably going to make sure it's a little bit better taken care of than if it's outside all the time. I'm not trying to restrict people. I try to mind my own business. I don't want people in my business. I cannot let this go. I mean, even if, even if you vote no for the time tonight, I'm still going to be a thorn in your side for as long as I can because I have to see this dog every day.
And if they, if they build a fence, then they won't be within the purview of this ordinance.
No.
They'll leave the dog out all the time.
Right. Well, I mean, when a dog is tied up all the...
What's the distinction between that?
Chaining up, that's what the tethering, it's tethering. If the dog's in a fence, there's, there's...
I thought it was the contact, like being in the house.
No, well, it is, but if they go out in the yard to feed the dog, the dog's going to be running around them, they're going to have some contact with the dog. When a dog's chained up all the time, it's muscles, they lose muscle because they can't lift. Can you imagine being tied up to a 20-foot chain, 10-foot chain all the time, not being able to move at all, not being able to run? That's what they're natural.
Dog walks 20 feet around the circle, some feces all day, 24 hours a day.
Isn't this, right now, a violation of our current code, the neglect of this animal that we currently have on the books?
Oh, I could call a Delaware Animal Control over and he can go look and see if...
I'm just asking the captain here.
Well, I think, Mr. Sineman, you were talking about some subjective, certainly we have a code that addresses abuse, but specifically being tethered is not currently a violation.
No, I didn't mean that. I meant just the general care, the lack of care. Our ordinance seems to point out here that they have to have an appropriate amount of care, which is obviously subjective and would...
Isn't there wording that says the bedding has to be dry or that the inside of the doghouse has to be dry? of the doghouse has to be dry?
Well, here's, here's what we have in the existing neglect of companion animal section. The existing section says you can't fail to provide a proper care or attention to any companion animal which has caused or may cause injury, and that's kind of the broad subjective test. Then it talks about guidelines in the section. This is where we've kind of reworded. Does have to have shelter that is dry, sanitary, and of suitable size. Food and drink must be provided, which is clean and of sufficient quantity, appropriately available to the animal when unattended. Space has to provide reasonable movement and exercise, free of much standing water, fecal matter, and other filth, which allows for access to shelter and light in reasonable circumstances. Reasonable veterinary care. Restraints of unattended companion animals must not allow the animal to leave the harbor's properties, but doesn't get into the choking aspect, which is one of the reasons I think I like our proposed amendment. And then restraint devices must be of suitable size and secured, that the animal not be injured. So that's, that's what's in the existing ordinance. As I said, a lot of that stuff is there, but I think tightening down the tethering and the, you can't choke an animal, and we escalated the penalties if you do something bad and some serious harm happens to the animal, we felt that was important. So, but as Captain Moore stated, it's kind of subjective and hard, so, you know, from what the citizen testimony is, that animal sounds like it could potentially be neglected, but I haven't seen it, you don't know. You might go there, it doesn't look so bad to the person looking at it, it's all in the eye of the beholder. So that's why I think some amendments have been, are good, but I guess a lot of that's in there, and a lot of it's, you know, kind of hard to enforce.
Another thing that I'm just thinking about is if that dog is brought inside, that owner is, I can make a judgment that that owner is not the type of person that would probably be kind to the dog inside or outside.
That might be true, but I imagine they're gonna take better care of her if they're gonna have to take, take her inside, like the flea and tick stuff. I mean, we can't control what everybody does all of the time, but if she gets a letter or, you know, in violation of something, she might be like, this dog isn't worth. Some people probably would take it out on the dog, but they're gonna take it out on the dog anyway if somebody calls and, you know, gets in trouble for something. But they might be like, okay, we'll get the dog up, or we'll try to be better, or, you know, something. Something might click on their head and say, okay, I have been neglecting her, you know, I don't have time for it, so maybe I should give it up. You know what I mean? And the Humane Society, you know, they were here, they were, they're willing to help in any way possible.
I will say this, just to muddy the water or clean it up further, when we passed the proposed amendment along to our commander and county attorney, they liked, they liked it, and they had some comments, but, so the existing ordinance, they were, not the existing ordinance, the existing amendment, they were in favor of. So again, that gave us confidence that passing the base, at least, is not harmful to their operations or whatever. We did not run the 10 to 6 thing by them because it hadn't been put as part of the ordinance, but the rest of it, they were in favor of, and I don't think the police has too much of a problem with it either, because they looked at it. So for what that's worth, they didn't testify, but they had written emails about it.
Have we been called about the dog that you're referring to?
Yep. The Humane Society's been called five different times and gone out there.
We have, the city has.
Yes, and I called the Delaware City Animal Control. He went out there and he said that he couldn't do anything because there was food, shelter, water. And then I called him back, and I asked him if he would ask them if they would be willing to give up the dog, you know? Obviously, they're not, they don't spend any time with her, and they said they had no intention of getting rid of her. So, and I haven't seen any changes, you know, from that, so.
Okay.
I don't know, but, I mean, I would be willing to take her.
Thank you.
The one thing that I just don't know, because I haven't seen the doghouse, but you mentioned that the existing ordinance might not do anything for this animal, but I just, I don't know because now we have the, it'd be two inches off the ground, and it's gotta give the animal access to dry areas. So if, if you are correct, and it's in water and it's wet, the revisions might actually get at that doghouse. Because before, it did say shelter. The existing ordinance said shelter, so you're right, nothing we can do. But this new amendment talks about it's gotta be durable material, moisture-proof floor, two inches off the ground. So that may, assuming what you're saying is true, provide some additional protection for that animal.
I also think that this ordinance changes, the changes, there's changes there, but there, the point of the tethering and the 10 to 6 is that gives you ammunition to go on the premises to, to investigate further the issues and find out that it's not two inches off the ground and so on and so forth. Otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels here.
Why can't you go on the premises anytime?
It's complaint-driven, and no one's gonna, no one's gonna notice something's not two, that it's two inches off the ground, but officers, somebody will know, once word goes out that it can be tethered, it's a little easier to see tethering as opposed to whether the inside of the doghouse is, has a damp floor, or two inches off the ground, or it's, things like that.
I just don't see though.
Again, at this point, we're spinning our wheels. I apologize, I tried. So I'm gonna make a motion, I would like to, well, we don't have a public hearing here, so, I'm stunned with this thing, so.
We already closed the public hearing.
Did I make a motion that we add the, Darren, help me on this.
You wanna do amendment number two?
Well, it's a waste of time, but I'm gonna go ahead and talk about it.
I'm not done making a decision, though.
I made the motion that we add the amendments, amendment number two, no unattended tethering between 10 and 6.
Yes, and.
More than that?
I don't need anything more than that for my purposes. Once you get a second, remember, this will be a debate just on the amendment, and then, so you probably wanna give some time to have a debate, and then when you vote on that, then if it passes, it'll be part of the thing.
Can, can he repeat the motion? I'm sorry, busy thinking.
Let me pull it up, because it might, I'll just read the whole thing, it's in the packet, but, okay, where is it? I've got too many windows open here. And I apologize. Do, 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 do. Come on. Okay, I'm scrolling down. This would be the amendment. We would add to section 505.25A under definitions, a definition for unattended companion animal. It would read as follows. A companion animal shall be considered an unattended companion animal when no owner or harbor is present and awake on the premises and the companion, companion animal is present. And then later on the ordinance, we would add a new section, one of the things you cannot do. You cannot leave an attended, unattended companion animal restrained by a tether outdoors for an excess of 15 continuous minutes between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So you cannot leave an unattended companion animal restrained by a tether outdoors for an excess of 15 continuous minutes between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. That would be, that is the amendment that Chris is, Councilman Jones made a motion for.
It just only applies if they're untethered. If they're outside and they're not untethered, it doesn't apply, is that right?
Right, because it just says they cannot be restrained by a tether outdoors. So a fence or an electric fence, or hoping it doesn't leave, that wouldn't be covered.
I'll second it, continue conversation.
So if we don't like the 10 to 6s, is there something else we can do that meets in the middle somewhere?
We can put on the ordinance without the amendment.
But the ordinance doesn't have the no tether.
I guess what I can't tease out is what we're try, are we trying to prevent people from leaving animals out for 24 hours continuously? Is that what we're trying to prevent? Because I can be on board with that. It's just the 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM part.
I think a lot of people don't like it outside in those hours because people are sleeping and the dogs will be barking. I mean, that's what I've heard through some of the testimonies, that between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM is when you're sleeping, and if you leave a dog tethered outside, they get aggressive, and they bark, and it could lay people.
The point is, if they're untethered, they can leave them on the fence, backyard. If we're trying to prevent animals outside at night, this only doesn't if they're on a chain.
Okay.
So. Listen, I'm good for no tethering in, in, in general.
And the noise is already addressed, is it not?
Yeah, we, the original idea was no tethering in general, and then everyone argued against that, and so we tried to go to the 10 to 6 route, so we just get a happy medium, and now you're going back to what my original proposal was.
Well, it was like over six hours.
Right.
And then give it like that.
Right.
From a drafting perspective and an enforceability perspective, the 10 to 6 is more enforceable than a, a time block where you'd have to sit there and watch. You're, you're, you're in pure policy now, but this would be, I think Captain Moore and I had the conversation, this would be enforceable.
You might know when, how long the bat is in the daytime.
Right.
At night, you know that.
If it's out there for more than 15 minutes, I think, I think someone could wait 15 minutes and watch, why do you do that six-hour block?
But if somebody does put it out there between 10 and 6, and it never barks.
Still violation?
You're still in violation, but unless somebody calls, nobody's gonna know.
Well, it says leave an unintended companion animal above the definition of unintended companion animal, no owner or harbor is present and awake, so if the owner's home and awake, it doesn't prohibit them from talking about it outside, only if they're not awake or at all.
And that was based on some of the feedback we got from the last meeting. That, that could be changed, anything's on the table, but that was just sort of the feedback where we heard, well, if I'm home and I'm on a night shift, or no, I work reverse shifts, and that's when I'm home, why can't I do it when, the day, so that's why we did that, but.
Right, I understand, but, but point is, if they're, this law only prohibits that tethering, could the animal be untethered?
Yes. And, and we built unattended to include awake, because if you're asleep and you're not watching, it's a match-up to it.
But if you're at home, you work, you know, third shift, and you get home at midnight, and you're up, and you put your animals up, and that's not a violation of this law.
Correct.
So, so basically, what, what we're trying to prevent is not just time, water, we're trying to prevent doing that when the owner's, if you're not there, I don't think, basically, ignoring the animal. Is that correct?
Yeah, this was a compromise based on, and we could've just said none, but people are like, hey, if I'm there and I'm wanting to go to the bathroom.
It's not totally restricting people trying to animal, have to pay attention to it and all that. It's only if they just, they aren't paying attention, they just leave it outside.
Okay. So now you're winning me over a little bit.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna be overreaching, but I don't, the way this is worded, it's not really.
What did you just say about midnight? Say that again.
If you're on third shift, you get home at midnight, and you may be up with your dogs, because people work their shift and just, you know, sleep different hours, so you put your dog outside, maybe you're on the porch, I'm just saying, potentially having a cigar.
Okay.
But my point is, this doesn't just tell people you can't leave your animal out, it does under circumstances where they're not paying attention to the animal, which I think is what we're trying to get at here.
And they put it on a tether at midnight.
Yes, if they're paying attention to it.
Well, if they're awake, they could be inside watching Columbo reruns.
Right.
At least they're awake, and then they can tend to the dogs, or the park, and they can go get it in.
That, that's why we did it that way. If, if, if the neighbor's like, hey, calls over, they'll be awake. Now, the one possible trick is, if they're sleeping, and someone knocks on the door and says, hey, are you awake? They're probably gonna say, yeah, I'm awake, and that's, that's a loophole, but there's no way, there's no perfect way.
You're still telling the dog, because it's been barking.
And then they can get to the noise thing and talk.
We can do that today.
Right, but. But also is that you're on the site, that you can see if there's violations of all these chains.
And I'm comfortable with that loophole, just wanna make everyone aware that most smart people, oh yeah, I'm awake, and at least you could talk to them and resolve the situation.
My concern is it would be overreaching, but by the wording of this, it's really not. If the person's awake and paying attention to the dog, they can still have their dogs there.
Hopefully, if they're paying attention to it, it's not barking as loud, or something, if it gets wrapped around the chain, they can see it, you know, so that's why we voted that way.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Jones. I have a second and Mr. Brownie. No more discussion, vote. Roll call.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
No.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I'm not gonna keep in track, but I think it did pass. So, so the amendment passes, so council, you have two options. If you wanna vote on the overall package tonight, you can, but I will have to go back tomorrow and integrate this into the things you have to sign it tomorrow.
That's okay.
Just want you to know.
Do we have a motion on the overall?
Amendment ordinance, right.
He's putting his glasses on.
I'm still stunned here, so I'm gonna get.
So Darren, they're voting on the amendment, amended.
They are voting on the amended ordinance. The amendment is now part of the ordinance, and now they're voting on the amended ordinance.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve of the amended, as discussed and submitted tonight.
Number 1761. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Jones, a second by Mr. Brownie. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You wanna go through another reading to come back with the full amendment?
No, it's done.
It's done.
It's done, let's carry it.
New rules.
What'll happen is I'll just have to get a clean copy before the mayor signs, but it's done, yeah, we're all good.
All right, we're good. Well, I appreciate that 100%, thanks.
Shannon, thank you so very much for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you so much.
Is anybody here for the rezoning of the fire station? You are? You are? Okay, then we'll go to that one. Okay. Please read in the record, 12 and 13, which are public hearings, and they're late, I apologize.
And 14.
Sure, do 12, do 14.
Ordinance number 17-66, an ordinance for the city of Delaware for approval of a rezoning amendment for fire station 304 on 4.102 acres to A1 Agricultural District and located the northwest corner of Cheshire Road and Glen Parkway. Ordinance number 17-67, an ordinance for the city of Delaware for approval of a conditional use permit for fire station 304 on 4.102 acres, zoned A1 Agricultural District, and located at the northwest corner of Cheshire Road and Glen Parkway. Ordinance number 17-68, an ordinance for the city of Delaware for approval of combined preliminary and final development plan for fire station 304 on 4.102 acres, zoned A1 Agricultural District, and located at the northwest corner of Cheshire Road and Glen Parkway.
They're making awful noises over here, sorry. Sorry. Ms. Jefflin?
I have a mayor members of council. This is a law-awaited application for station 304 down in the southeast quadrant of the city. So let's get right into it. It's on the northwest corner of Glen and Cheshire Road, as you all are aware. Now, the site is just a little bit over four acres in size. It is, despite what this map shows, it's kind of hard to see up here, it actually shows[1683.86] It actually shows us green, which is agricultural district. That's our automatic zoning that sites come into in the city upon annexation and if no other rezoning takes place. We feel it's prudent as a staff to bring forward to you a formal rezoning to A1 rather than just an automatic rezoning of A1. So essentially, we're rezoning it to exactly what it's owned today, but we're just doing it in a formal way. The A1 district is a very low density, and so it's consistent with that and with our comprehensive plan, which, as you can see here, is, has a size, is very low density, single family. Obviously, we're putting a fire station on the site that requires a conditional use permit. That's the second case on your docket. And then the third case is a combined preliminary and final development plan. The site is about two thirds, uh, doesn't have any trees, and about a third of it has quite a lot of trees on the site, as you can see from aerial photograph. What we wanted to do is a couple of things. One, build, build this station very efficiently. Use station 303 as a template, as a model, uh, so we didn't have to redesign an entire station. In Delaware County, uh, the entity I can think of that does this a lot is the Olentansie School District. As they're cranking out school after school after school, they came design template. It saves on design cost, obviously. It lets them be more expeditious in how they develop sites. But it does another thing as well, and I can tell you this, is having a, a child who has been in Olentansie and has been redistricted several times, uh, when the child moves from school to school, you know exactly where everything is. It's all exactly the same. Yeah, I was thinking about this today, that makes a ton of sense in a safety forces building, particularly fires, John has, they probably have all the stations have exactly same layout for that exact same reason. It's probably even more so true with safety forces. So, uh, just wanted to give you that little bit of background. I'm not sure we've really talked about that a lot because we're only on our fourth station and, and the second one using, um, the, the template of 303. There are a couple of additional touches, and we'll talk about those as well. We've taken the site plan and tried to color this up a little bit for you, uh, so you can see the different functional parts of this site. As I said, one of the things we really went into this as a staff looking to do is save all of the trees that you just saw on the aerial photograph. Uh, we have neighbors to the north and to the west, uh, but also I think everyone felt like it was the right thing to do, uh, to try to get the station on the site and save the trees. What you can see here too is the main stormwater pond in darker blue. It's kind of showing up on the screen. And in lighter blue, uh, with a WQ here, a water quality basin, which coming through the final engineering was required in addition to the primary basin here. And that's in the, the event that you have super heavy rain, uh, this basin's actually connected to the main basin as well. What you can see is that it leaves us a site, uh, using the template and being as compact as we can, coming off of both roads, Cheshire here, Glen here, uh, with, uh, really the southeast portion of the site to work with. We have those two entrance ways, and we have the visitor parking lot here. And then we have a little bit of frontage, uh, the building actually is, we're on a roundabout here, not on any square corner. So the building actually addresses the round, arch portion of the roundabout here on the, on what would be the corner anywhere else. With signage out in front and leaves us a little bit of a front yard along the roadway. Now, this is the landscape plan, and I, I pulled this up to show you again, we're preserving a lot of trees and planting some additional trees. But, um, the fire chief been working with the neighbor to the west, has also identified, um, the desire to plant, uh, 25 more evergreen trees in that area of the site, uh, eight foot tall planting. Overall, we have to take out about 99 calipres of trees. Overall, we're putting in 100 caliper inches of trees. And also overall, we're saving about 816 caliper inches of trees in that green area I showed you. So I think we've achieved, uh, all of those goals that we, that we set out as a, as a team to try to do. In terms of pedestrian connectivity, uh, there will be a sidewalk extension along Glen and Cheshire Road. Uh, there's a sidewalk now along Bromiller Wood subdivision to the north, so it will connect into that. Uh, the properties to the west of this are in the county, don't have sidewalk yet, but presumably at a point in time, they, they might, and our sidewalk would, uh, connect into that as well. Again, I think the design team, uh, that we fired is, uh, same as 303, has done a, a good job. You can see the template here again, 303 is a very handsome looking building, and 304 will be as well. You can see the addition of limestone, and actually a, a piece of the real thing, uh, there. That will be a wainscoting and also go around some of the column and window elements, as you see here on the screen. In terms of lighting or signage, uh, though hard to see here, but it will be the, the, again, the template for our brand and our gateland corridor plan. Uh, we have the first sign at the water treatment plant that I think all of you have seen at this point. Uh, this will fall in line with that, uh, with the signage that you see here, and it will be located out in front. I think with a flag pole too, as well, John. And some parking lot lighting, uh, in a minimalist fashion, seven light poles, just enough to light the parking lot, but to keep it minimal, uh, but sufficient. And I think with that, I'm just going to turn it over to the fire chief. Your private commission did recommend unanimous approval, uh, 7, uh, O at their October 4th meeting. But then for the mayor, I did want to mention that we did, um, do our due diligence as a staff, and we can talk about this more later, I'm sure we probably will, um, to look into solar on this building or in, on the grounds. Um, we spent the better part of three weeks, I'll say, uh, particularly Jerry Warner and my staff, getting quotes and doing that sort of thing, and just trying to figure out where, where could we put this on the site? The place it really identified was what turned out to be this water quality basin right here, uh, as the place to put solar if you had the budget, which it, it wasn't accounted for in the original budget. Again, we're on this template, um, system, not that it can't, things can be added, but you still need budget, you gotta pay for it.
There's still many grants likely for, for solar. So maybe Diane could look into that, Diane's pretty good at that.
And I'll just chime in just for a second, uh, even as we were looking at the, uh, the solar, the use of solar on this property, the one thing that, uh, we were not looking at was feeding the building. We weren't looking at sending it to the grid whatsoever. The reason why I bring that up, had we, uh, brought the electricity into, inside the building, stored it and so forth, it would require additional, uh, floor space, uh, for those type of controls. So what we would end up doing is sending it back to AEP, and in return, we would, uh, get a benefit on our, uh, energy costs. So having said that, the location of the panels are not a critical issue. And what I mean is, it doesn't have to be on this pro, piece of property. And I think when you look at the dynamics of what we're trying to do with this piece of property, we're trying to maintain the aesthetic looks and the protection, uh, of the neighborhoods, especially the Sabos stood directly to the west, Bromiller to the, uh, north of us, and, uh, certainly we have the golf course, uh, and road that separates us from, uh, to the east. Uh, so we did look at the potential of doing solar panels on this. It just does not work on this, uh, piece of property. But again, that does not say we can't do it at another piece of property and still accomplish everything that's wanted.
I was thinking over the weekend, maybe up to water treatment, it just seems like there's a lot of land up there that possibly we could do it, since your budget's over because of electricity, because of all the pumps, that might be a, a better choice right now. I do have a question before you, if you'll go back to, I think it was two screens ago though.
What you looking for?
Um, the next one back.
This one?
Yeah, I guess that's the one. What worries me here is the roundabout, and some people have trouble with roundabouts, they get in the case. You've got, and it's two entrances, very close to this roundabout, and that really worries me. What does Bill say about that?
Engineering's okay, um, as is John, and I'll go into a little more detail. The, the main entrance and the full entrance is off of Cheshire. Um, the entrance off of Glen is only for emergency vehicles. It will be signed that way, and obviously you're going to have to cut the median of Glen to allow them to get, there's a median, a grass dividing, so you, to allow, there's fire trucks to get across there, you've got to cut that. That'll be stamped, so it'll be a different material and a different look in addition to just science saying, this is emergency vehicles only. So really, only one public entrance and one full entrance.
And that driveway is exactly where the existing driveway is located at.
It's, it's about as far west as you can get.
Okay.
But still hold that tree line and, and be cautious of our neighbors.
Okay, just, I've seen roundabouts, they're not pretty sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, appreciate for just interjecting on the, uh, solar aspect. But, uh, it's a great privilege for all of us to, to be discussing this, uh, opportunity for us. We've discussed it for quite some, uh, uh, time. I thank you as city council, I think the voters of the city of Delaware, allow us or afford us the opportunity to, uh, move south as we discussed as part of the 2010 fire levy. And that's as the growth continued in the southeast, we would end up putting that fire station down there. So, um, today, that's what we're asking for, is to move forward with this. The standard, uh, as far as, uh, um, the fire station that we've discussed for quite some time, um, is, uh, the fire station is, uh, established, and, you know, that look, other than the modification, uh, with the, um, the limestone, which has been a long desire for us as far as fire station. So we're looking forward to moving forward with this project.
I have a torn meniscus and my knee's killing me, okay? It's all good. Sorry, you're all like, what's going on?
Chief, I'm just curious, is there anything changing in, on the interior, different type of flow than 303?
No, basically what you're going to see is exactly, uh, what we had, couple minor modifications. If you look at the front door, there was a, uh, we're going to move the breezeway so it's flush, uh, with the, uh, the building. Uh, this will allow us a little bit more room, uh, in our training room, uh, by compressing our watchroom a little bit. Uh, we've done a couple other minor modifications, uh, and that's created breezeway in the two hallways that lead directly to, um, the apparatus floor. And that is because infection control, and as you've been seeing, some of the, uh, articles dealing with cancer now is keeping that separation, so we've incorporated that into this project as well.
I was just curious, we were thinking about that today, how often you get a chance to rebuild your house and say, I wish I'd done this or done that, change this around.
And it was, Chris, you remember our, uh, building, and it was very interesting, some of the modifications that our personnel, uh, wanted. We got into, um, the bathrooms, uh, where our personnel take their shower, we put tile there. They asked that we not put the tile in there. So when we're dealing with that type of, uh, situation, I thought, I think we did very well on our first fire station, uh, with this new concept. Very proud of the input that we got as we built 303.
Exactly the same then, as what it was?
Almost, yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Do you have anything to add?
Just happy to hear, and it's been a long time coming, and we're excited. It is an interesting concept when you get a chance to go back and see what you could possibly do better. The firefighters did have a lot of good input, tweaking minor things. But the other thing that chief mentioned about cancer and different things, we really are studying ways to separate and to minimize the chance for cross-contamination. That stuff we've learned over the past five years, as we've done other stations, and we're, I will bring that to this one as well. So, excuse me, we're real excited about that too. That's it.
Any questions, any other questions? Okay, well, open this up to a public hearing. If you'd like to come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm David Carpenter, 932 Executive Boulevard, Delaware, Ohio. Uh, I'd just like to say that, um, a, a couple of things, um, one of which I am, by no means intend to impede the, uh, fire safety of the city and, uh, slow things down with that regard. And I appreciate the, uh, cost savings and the, uh, uh, other aspects of making 304 look a lot like 303. I am concerned about, uh, the solarize, uh, prospects of it, and I hope that, uh, city council will appreciate that there's a wide variation of things that are possible for the city to consider, everything from putting a solar array on this building as it's intended to be built, that might produce about 10% of its power, or something like that, or its energy, up to solarizing the entire city as our, as our options. I would disagree with the chief about floor space for putting a small solar array on there. I, if forced to deal with this roof design, which it appears to be the case, I would at least hope this, that the builders would move what appears to be on the drawings, a couple of vent pipes that are on the southwest side, uh, that would get in the way of putting future panels there. The hip roof design is just not a 2017 design, as far as I'm concerned. A few years from now, we're going to be wanting to solarize everything as much as we can. And the idea that we're building a new building now with a roof design that is inappropriate for solar, I think is, is a sad thing and, and not necessarily the best use of my tax money. The, if, by comparison, if you look at the 302 station or even the 301 station, they're much more suited for solar in terms of the design. Uh, the only, the 302 actually has a broad south facing roof, except for two vent pipes that can always be relocated, as can these. I'd like to see them moved to the northwest side, if that's at all possible. Uh, and then maybe panels could be put on a few years later. With regard to, um, affordability, there are so many things that I think the sitters should be considering with regard to solar, uh, and not the least of which is that it's a lot cheaper when you go really, really big scale, above 500 kilowatts, where you can start to, uh, have, uh, third party financing come in and leverage the 30% tax credit that's available to commercial and residential type, uh, solar things that nonprofits and government entities are not able to do on them, on their own. But, uh, and in Ohio, the market is very difficult with PPAs, it's the way it's done in California. But in Ohio, it takes a really large project because the margins are very small, uh, before you can start to get, uh, a payoff on that. And basically what happens here is a third party, if I were wealthy enough, it could be me, I would put the solar panels on a city building and then sell you the power for it at a price a penny below what you're currently paying for, uh, you know, the utility company. Uh, that's the basic model of it, after X number of years, it's paid off, and, uh, then you get free power from then on. Uh, one of the nice things about solar is, is that it's not like most investments, it eventually gets to be free. You know, there's, uh, you're going to be, and unlike most investments, you're going to pay for it either way. You're going to pay an electric bill next year, whether you're paying it to the utility or whether you're paying for, uh, the purchase of solar panels or the purchase of power from solar panels, you're paying an electric bill next year. And when you go solar, you start the clock, and the clock starts ticking to free power. And, you know, in my mind, uh, that's financially the way to go. I would like to see solar seriously considered in all future endeavor, endeavors in the city. I would like to see this building as much as possible enabled for solar on the roof. I'm a big fan of on the roof instead of on the ground, uh, because, for a couple reasons. It's cheaper, you've already got the roof as a structure, you don't have to build a new structure for it. And second of all, you're not reutilizing, uh, land that could be used something else, you're just using the roof. And, um, that having been said, I sure hope the city does consider, uh, you, you do have other areas, I even, even one of the fire stations, you know, uh, uh, better roof resource, uh, but, uh, and of course, plenty of other opportunities with regard to other buildings and other properties for ultimately getting a larger fraction of our power from solar. Do you have any questions? I think I've said what I need to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. What is the wish of council, an ordinance 17-66?
I'd say a quick question in regard to moving those vents, how big a deal is that? If we wanted to close vents so that we'd have a roof?
I don't think that's insurmountable at all.
It seems like a reasonable thing to do, so if you found a roof.
Joe, what are the, what are the major issues with roof mounted panels? Besides, I guess there's an aesthetic issue, but besides that, this is a handsome looking station. The fact that they might have panels on the roof, I, I, most people would recognize that that's an effort to try to, to offset cost, uh, over the long term. Any, just from an architect's standpoint, I mean, you must be faced with this all the time.
Yeah, and I think, uh, in this particular instance, with this design and the given site with the tree line that's bordering along the west, um, that presents some challenges from the orientation, uh, the way the building's situated with the, uh, primary, uh, roof line to the west. The thing with the design that we've kept and repeated is the hip roofs that he mentioned. And those hips really cut down on the amount of roof that we could actually put panels on.
Right.
If you go back to the elevations, Dave. You know, really, uh, as we're looking up there, as you see all the pieces, parts and the little angles, it really breaks down how much usable space you could get there. We did do studies or worked with Dave and, and Jerry about looking at how many panels we could get in the front yard and different locations, but really that roof design, the way it is.
Yeah.
Does not really lend itself for a, a good amount of panels.
Okay.
Not that we're against.
Yeah.
Solar panels.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion? How do you do? You asked a question.
Yeah, well, I just think that whenever we can, we should be considering the solar, the way we designed this thing.
You've been saying this since we got back from Germany, I want solar.
Anything we can do to this one, to make it at least possible to realize some. That being said, uh, with the requirement for three meetings on ordinance 17-66. That being said, I'll leave the requirement for three readings on order number 17-66. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call please. May I ask a question before roll call? Sure. So if we approve this, have we actually changed the, we're approving the design as it is, right? So we haven't made any changes to make the solar actually possible in the future?
I, I think administratively, we can probably handle those two vents. We'll, we'll have to get into the design frankly in the future too. There's, Tesla has solar shingles out now that are just starting to come online, they're a little expensive, but I mean, that's clearly technology that's coming along, you know? So there'll be opportunities here and other places.
But we are going to move those vents?
We could, we can look at moving those.
I think what we look at is the feasibility of that, that cost, Lisa.
Exactly.
My charge from the very outset has been to try to advocate to get solar onto this property, either on the building or on the property. We're going to continue to try to do that as Joe mentioned tonight. And you approving this tonight does not keep us from trying to explore an option here. The other, if we could do it here, that's great. The other option we have is to perhaps at station 302, we have far more opportunities out there just with, with, we have more property, first of all, and we have more roof, roofline. But we'll do everything we can to see if we can at least get some, some ability to do something here. So approving this tonight does not keep me from, you know, working with staff.
But there's no reason to move the vents unless they can put the solar panels out.
Right, I mean, that wouldn't be a, we could do that administratively.
Okay. I want to make sure.
Yeah, we're on, right.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Move for approval, order number 17-66. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
I move to spin the rules required, three readings, order number 17-67. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Move for the approval, order number 17-67. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Yeah, I move to spin the rules required, three readings, order number 17-67. Second then.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Move for the approval, order number 17-67. Second.
Mr. Browning, any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move back up to item nine, which is, which is consideration of a new liquor permit.
Consideration of the new liquor permit. Delaware Lanes and 536 Sunbury Road, Delaware, Ohio, permit class D5.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I believe in your packets, you have a liquor permit background completed by the Delaware Police Department in regards to 536 Sunbury Road, that is Delaware Lanes, it's an existing business, bowling alley, it's been there for several years. The applicant, to make this simple, it's changed ownership, does not intend to change the operation of the bowling alley and has requested that the current D5 permit be reissued in the new owner's name. We performed our standard background check and based on all of the factors listed in your report, the police department does not find a legislative basis for requesting a hearing to object to the issuance of this liquor permit.
Any questions? Captain Moore, no? What is the wish of council?
I move for approval of the liquor.
Is there a second? I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see another business take over and keep going. And we'll move back to item 15, which is the third reading of resolution 17-57.
Resolution number 17-57, a resolution creating a designated outdoor refreshment area, the DORA, for downtown Delaware and enacting regulations.
Mr. Solomon?
No, it's me.
Sorry. I had a bit of trouble, just not paying attention.
I'll pay attention. I need the four questions that were submitted by council. I thought that it would be a good idea at this time to bring, Councilman Hellinger had sent four questions that he had wanted addressed about the DORA. And although I sent them out in response as an email, Councilwoman Keller had asked that we bring them up during a public meeting. Elaine is, thank you. So these are just answers to the four questions for council's consideration regarding the DORA. And we can go through it. The liquor serving establishment only allowed to use DORA-approved cups inside the establishment. The answer is no, that, that the DORA-established cups are only required once you leave the brick and mortar. The DORA district is considering encompassing businesses, therefore the businesses reside in the DORA. A patron can opt out of the DORA participation when acquiring alcohol from the DORA-permitted establishment located in the DORA area. If the patron stays in the brick and mortar, they are not participating in the DORA. Okay? I'm not sure if you want me to go into any, or any more detail on that. And then there, question number three is a little bit lengthy. It had, Councilman Hellinger has pointed out some different local governments that have Doras, some things that they do. The, these rules are not state-mandated, however, we can address the concerns under our public safety in the application if that is the wish of council. However, from my perspective, just in the work that I've done on Doras, I almost feel that it would be better to be a city policy when people are applying for Doras, to have that information in the, to have that type of information in there. The application, my concern is if going back and having to adjust the application may get a little bit more tricky in the future. And then exactly how council wants to address, do you have the signs on non-liquor establishments that say, please come in with your alcohol or stay out with alcohol? Again, it, we can put it in the application. Darren had recommended having it in the application. I think it probably would be, my opinion is that it might be better addressed in city policy. And then finally, the fourth question has to do with the extra costs having to do with Doras and who's carrying the insurance. That would, as it stands right now, the proposal is, is that that would be the responsibility of the special events committee. They would, any host, any host entity would be required to pay for extra security, pay for extra cleanup at the discretion of the city. And if they say, no, we're not going to pay for the extra police officers or refuse, then a permit's not issued. It's that simple. So those are the four questions and I hope that I answered them all all right. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions on that.
Do you mind if I jump in real quick, maybe just to clarify what? Well, she was, I just want to clarify what she ascribed to me. My recommendation was to put into the public health and safety plan two things that we've all kind of discussed are what we think the DORA is anyway, just to formalize them. One would be you can't take liquor from one DORA establishment into another, which I think probably states anyway. And then the second one would be individual businesses in the district who are not alcohol would have the choice of permitting alcohol into their establishment or not. So that's, that's, those were my two recommendations, is to say they have the choice to allow that. They would be in charge of the signage if they want to do it, we wouldn't print out yay alcohol, no alcohol signs, but they'd just have that. Those are my two recommendations.
I think that there was a question though, Darren, about what, what the signs would say, either allowed to come in or please don't come in. And I think it had to do with a letter that we received, if you remember the last council meeting. There's been.
I was just going to say it's up to the businesses and let them figure it out. And if they want to allow it, they can, if they don't want to allow it, they can. I don't, I don't want to get, I didn't want to get in the business of writing signs.
The issue that was brought up though was do you opt out or do you opt in?
Right.
Because the, Tom Myers wrote that letter and he said, I don't want to have to be the bad guy and say, no liquor in my property. People say, I'm opting into the DORA for here.
Well, council certainly could decide whichever way they wanted to go. I would just say opt out, but if you want to opt in, that's fine too.
But Darren, you agree that it's okay to leave that off the state application in case we want to change that later, is that right? Or do you want it in the application?
You don't need it, but we got questions and there were some concern from the public and some members of council. And since we all seem to have that understanding that you can't take it from one bar to another and we want to give people a choice, I think it might answer some concerns that people have about voting for the DORA, but you don't need it. It just, it might assuage some of the fears that people have, I can't keep alcohol from my store, and are they going to come into my bar with it? But I agree with Jackie, you don't need it.
And then, just a clarification and a few more things. The executive summary, can you pull that up any length, please? Number one, the boundaries, we wanted to make sure that it was clear that the boundaries on Sandusky Street are from Spring Street to Central, but they do not include Spring Street. So the boundary signs will be put up before the intersection so that none of Spring Street is included. And then number three would be that the, the cups, as determined by the city, are the standard red cups, not to exceed 16 ounces, in case people wanted to do something smaller for wine, they could, they're not to exceed 16 ounces. And then the, they, that they must be printed, right, with the name of the liquor holder establishment on at least one side of the cup. And we put the size. So we have, from the last meeting, just to keep everybody, if you're keeping score, we have the four questions with the answers and then we do have the changes that council has asked us to make to the general application. So that's where we are. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Are you here? Questions?
I just have a comment on the, there's nothing more generic than a red solo cup. And, and from that standpoint, if the idea behind that, that they're imprinted and that you want to make certain that people aren't bringing, you know, alcohol or drinks into that area, I, I think that's probably the worst thing you can do is put a standard generic cup, granted it's supposed to be printed on one side, but, oh, yeah, my hands over that, it's only printed on one side, I can't tell. This is my red solo cup. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't speak to the issue. I think that really needs, if we're going to do that, it would have to be something that you're not going to go to Meyer and pick up a 24 pack of. And, you know, I think it needs to be very unique, whatever that is. I don't care what, I don't care what it is, but I think it has to be very unique.
I guess, I guess that that would be my question, and since the chief isn't here tonight, is that what would be, we, we've looked at a few different entities and they have used the red solo cups. First of all, they're the lowest-cost solo cups that you can buy to help the establishments. So I'm sure the chief would be open to any suggestions, but I'm not sure what those suggestions would be. I mean, go to a different color solo cup. If you start buying like hard plastic, then, you know, that, those costs get passed on to the businesses. I mean, they have to buy those. So we're, we're, it's a delicate balance, I understand what you're saying, but it's a delicate balance between some needs to be affordable, but yet stand out in some way and the color red generally stands out. So I know the chief would be open to suggestions if anyone has them.
What if we require that labels would be on two sides, then you can't cover, you can't do this and cover it up?
We can require that. I couldn't find anything that would print more than two sides, so we could do, we could do two sides if that's the wish of council.
Or just something that's so common as red, I think is.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Something's not so common as red.
Okay.
I think, I mean, that's, but do we have to codify that though, Darren? Color of the cup?
I don't think so.
No, it doesn't have to be in that.
It doesn't have to be codified by council.
Well, Jackie and I talked about rules, but she said she'd really want a red because it stands out.
It stands out, right. And, and it doesn't have to, no, I take that back, the state does want to know what it looks like. That is a part of their application, you have to include this.
We have to.
So, but, because Darren, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's section?
Looking at it right now.
Six, no?
Six is your safety section.
Yeah, that's public health and safety.
It's not in that section.
You know, we'll double check on that. I know that I read in a couple of the other DORA applications, they did identify what the cups would look like. And again, you know, chief just said that that would be one that would step, stand out to them so they could recognize it, but we can certainly look that up. It could have been an addition that maybe Worthington or Hillier put in there as an extra for the state. I like to give a little less information and that way you don't have to change it as much. But I'll, Darren, if you'll help me look for that tomorrow, that would be great.
No problem.
Regardless of the color, I think George suggested the point, if you have to leave on those sides, now you can't cover it. If somebody can't with your own, cover it up, clearly it's a red cup. I'm assuming they're putting labels on these cups?
Not, no, they have to be printed, so that labels can't be filled off, so they have to be printed.
I mean, the thing is, you can get a solo cup in any color, I'm on Amazon now, and if it, we picked purple, we could, I could order some on Amazon.
Yeah, but you can't go to Meyer.
I don't know.
So, okay, so I guess what we could do is make a couple different recommendations besides red. And let me check with chief and make sure that he's good with that and then we can, well, Darren's going to help me look it up to make sure we don't have to identify the exact.
Yeah.
Color for the state.
Maybe in the application, we could just say that it's the chief police, his discretion in terms of.
Right.
We shouldn't have to come back to city council to decide the cup color. I don't think, hope that's not the case.
I can tell you.
It's not in our current application, the color.
Right, but it said that there was a placeholder that the chief would determine what that would look like.
Oh yeah, the language is the chief of police will dictate that only, that which events need.
Right, and what containers in the markets will be for everyone to serve at the DORA. So that might be sufficient, Darren, for the application if we just say the chief will dictate it?
I thought so when we submitted it, I continue to think that's the level of detail you need. I'll look up the code while we're still talking.
Okay, so we'll double check on that, but, you know, I, certainly not anything we can overcome, feel very confident with that. Come a long way with this.
Well, are you okay with that if we do two-sided labels or two-sided runnings?
Yeah.
And the cost of the printing in the cups, the city will dictate what the cups and the labels, how big they must be. And if you want it on two sides, the city will dictate for that, dictate that. But we will not recommend where to get them printed, we won't recommend any of that, and that's purely at the cost of the establishment.
And due to the powers of technology, only state code requires that we have. And due to the powers of technology, only state code requires that we have proposed requirements for the purpose of ensuring health and safety within the area. And so we don't have to say the color of the cup is this or the size is that, but you have to, and I think our proposal says it's going to be in a cup design with the chief. So I think that's okay.
Okay, thanks Darren. And then so two sides, is that the direction that all council would like to go?
And whatever this wraparound, just so, I mean, because again, if you have, you know, huge pause and you just see a little bit, somebody's walking down, you know, if you really want your, your law enforcement officers to validate that's a valid cup, it needs to be probably circular all the way around.
Again, I think we would just take this up with the chief and make sure that the cup was, the marking was conspicuous enough that no matter how you were holding it, it would be obvious that it was a cup that had a label on it that distinguished it from a generic.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with one sided label because if somebody wants to get a red, green, blue cup from Meyer, if they're going to go through that trouble, they could put it in a cup like Carolyn's or like George's, or they could pour vodka and do a soda can and, I mean, who knows that they might be doing it right now. So I just don't see how that makes that big of a difference.
We don't have to put it in the application. This is something that the chief can dictate that, whatever the chief is comfortable with, I'm comfortable with.
I move for passage of 1757.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Brownie, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
I just like to think they have to call the work.
It's been a team effort, let me tell you. We've all had our hands in it, but thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 16, which is the third reading of ordinance number 17-62.
Ordinance number 17-62, an ordinance amending the employment agreement with the city manager.
Madam Mayor, nothing's changed since the first two readings due to, and sorry, according to our guidelines for ordinance readings, anything having to do with pay grades and things we try to go through readings is to give adequate time to read about it. And this is the third reading.
Is there a motion?
To push us off to next year.
I'll make a motion. 17-62. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
And 17 is consideration of resolution 17-60.
Resolution number 17-60, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in joint litigation to challenge provisions of state law which violate home rule authority granted to cities by the Ohio constitution.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start this off here, but this will be a kind of a team effort with our finance director, Dean Stelzer, and our recently appointed income tax administrator, Lori Johnson, who I see in row four or five back there. This is a, an outgrowth of an act that was passed by the state legislature, which the central Ohio mayors and management, managers group is recommending a coalition be formed to consider challenging the constitutionality of this provision that was put into the budget bill. And for a number of reasons, there are, that are laid out in your, in your fact sheet, but this is really an example of the state dictating to communities how to collect, in this case, a business debt profit taxes and indicating to us that if we don't have these provisions in place by the end of January, that we can't collect income taxes, which just seems preposterous and an overreach. It's really more the process and the principle. There might be some merit to what's being proposed, but the way it went about, the way this went about would not unlike the cell tower issue, the small cell tower issue that we're also litigating. And we, I think, need to get the attention of the legislature and the executive branch that these are, there's home rules, you know, is kind of a cornerstone of local government, at least for charter communities. And the income tax obviously is our major share of revenue. And the state's efforts right now, I think, make it difficult for us to, to know, you know, which way to go with this. So we're at this point recommending legislation that would allow us to join this, this coalition. There's another piece of it as well that adds something in there regarding an increase to the original dollar amount for the small cell tower legislation. So it really does two things. And, but the principal thing really is the, our joining of this coalition with a number of central Ohio municipalities, including the city of Columbus, to, to oppose this, this legislation and to see, and actually unfortunately use the courts as a way to do that. And with that said, I know Dean has some comments about it. I don't know, Dean, did you want to introduce Lori as well?
I was planning on that. If you'd like to stand up Lori, I'd like to introduce Lori Johnson. She is our new income tax administrator for about two or three weeks. She's worked in the tax department for about 10 years, most recently as the income tax office supervisor. Lori's lives in Delaware, Wesleyan Woods, with her husband Craig, and her two daughters, Maisy and Anna. She's got a pretty good background, do a good job in the tax department. Along those lines, she said she's prepared, I'm just kidding, I'm going to put her on the spot. I could just have a couple of comments related to the issue. As Tom said, there are a lot of just how they went about doing this that regardless of what it is they're doing, just, you know, are problematic. But setting all that stuff aside, the home rule and everything else, nutshell is, is what they're requesting is to provide the means by which businesses can file their city income taxes, the business income tax, not individual income taxes through the Ohio Business Gateway. They do that, they do. And if I'm a contractor and I have to file city business tax returns in 25 different cities, I have to file 25 different Ohio Business Gateway returns. This would enable them to file one and then the state tax commissioner would come in and deal with how that gets delegated and distributed to the 25 cities. That, even that in and of itself probably could be very workable, it just needed some, some massaging of sorts. But I think some of the concerns, there's just a lot of information that we use from the business returns that can be beneficial even to following up on municipal income tax issues. Your concern, although nothing that's quantifiable, is somewhat the ulterior motive. The changes that are being proposed basically says that the city has to, in essence, delegate the tax commissioner of the state Ohio as the person to administer this tax. That's different than just being a conduit to make it easier for businesses to file their return. They could do that through the Ohio Business Gateway and not have the tax commissioner being designated as the person responsible for administering this tax. There are some that concerns, that's just the first step for them then to come back in at a state level and decide that, not that there's anything wrong with it, but if they decide first $250,000 of business taxable income is now no longer taxable, they can make that determination because they administer the tax. The other thing, it's somewhat problematic of it, it's not like everybody has to file that way. It's an election that the individual business can do. If they elect not to go that route, then we still have to collect their business return and still stay on top of trying to manage those. They can elect to file that way, then they can elect to not file that way. The language, if you look at what was put in the, the budget bill, which is what the initial legislation was, it's fairly extensive. You know, in today's day and age where they're trying to simplify tax, I'm not sure how adding all this complicated language accomplishes that. But that's somewhat of the background. And again, whether this will prove beneficial or not, there is a provision, and I'm not sure how that's going to play out in, in the budget bill that was adopted that included these provisions, that it's that we have until I believe January 30th, January 31st or January 1st of next year to amend our tax ordinance. That basically says we go along with what they're doing. And if we don't do that, supposedly the state can come in and get rid of our ability to collect any tax. So it's kind of a roundabout way. I think there were some comments related to that in, in your packet that the attorney had indicated. And it's kind of a, kind of like take it or leave it type of approach, but that's what's in front of us. I don't know if you had anything more.
Lori, what are your colleagues saying?
I've seen tremendous amount of emails just today, even in the last two hours, three to five. I just stopped in this evening to check my email again. Another five cities have joined in. Everybody is getting on board with this, whether it's the city managers organization or the tax administrators organization. I think a lot of cities feel strongly about the states stepping in on us and our authority to rule ourselves. So I think Dean really laid out everything pretty clearly, but many cities on board.
Just from the order of magnitude, our business corporate, our tax collections, roughly $2 million a year, which is about 8% of our total collections of about 26, 27, 28 million dollars. And with the, again, businesses had the opportunity to file electronically through the Business Gateway. I think you went back and checked of the, what, 1,500 returns last year, only 15 of them used the Business Gateway. It's another one of the concerns is it doesn't work real well. And the state's kind of saying, we'll make it better at some point. I just, again, it's going to create even more headaches, you know, and not that there can't be something down the road, but wow, I don't know.
So we're recommending your favorable action on the resolution before you.
So you've got it broken down 6,003.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the six is the amount that's being requested for the HB 49.
Okay.
The three is a request for, that's really, that's going to be the second, the second time that matter is coming for you for the small cell tower legislation. And Darren can elaborate on that.
The last time we gave out that, somehow we said that.
We, I, but I knew this was going to happen. So the way I wrote it was I said it's capped at 6,000. They've asked for 3,000 more. So that's, I wrote it so at least they wouldn't have a blank check. So we never said that was it, but we only gave authorization for the initial 6,000. So I think this time the staff's consensus is, okay, if we're going to tell you this time, this is it for Delaware. For us. You guys can keep going if you want, but we'll, so, but I wrote it that way because I knew that we'd get more bills. So council can certainly say we're not willing to go further, but we never told them, this is it. We told them we only have authority for the six. So we're asking for authority for three more and then we would tell them this is it. If council's inclined to continue on that.
That fair to say? Cell tower, Dave could.
Yeah, I think this is money well spent still at this point, guys. I think the legal team and the other communities that are involved are focused more on trying to produce maybe a piece of legislation, alternative to what was passed in the state of Ohio that might be palatable to everybody involved in the, in the industry. In addition to, obviously there, they've won a couple of cases and there are other cases going on around the state, one of which has been one, which has been a vacation team loose. But I think if we can really get down to alternative legislation and allow that group to get into the state house and have some more discussions, that ultimately is probably the most, that the best way for everybody. But I agree with Darren, it's got to be, has to be an end.
Yeah, that would be it for us on the small cell tower.
Okay, any questions? I'm in one of these three. Thank you for being here and welcome to the team. Thank you. Who's which council?
I move for adoption resolution 17-62.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones, the second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
18 is a first reading, as is the item 20 as well, is the first reading. And I believe Brad, you wanted, you want action tonight on item?
Okay, let's read into the record number 18. Let's start there.
Ordinance number 17-69, an ordinance supplementing the 2017 appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for land development, engineering, professional services, and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason to provide for the timely review of development plans and for the continued utilization of construction inspection services, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you.
That one is going to a second reading.
So breathe and then go on to 18.
Ordinance number 17-7, funding the 2017 appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for various water plant line item accounts and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason to provide for the timely purchase and funding of these potable water treatment services, and as such will be in full force and be in effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Unfortunately, as what was in 2015, 2017, again, we're looking at a increase in our electrical and chemical budget at the water treatment plant. Basically, it came down this year, both with, because of electrical and chemical budgets going up, was really our raw water quality within our, both our groundwater and our surface water. Our groundwater high in iron and magnesium, therefore it puts a lot more demand on our membrane system with the removal of those pollutants. Olentangia River, this year been pretty dry, saw a lot more turbidity within the Olentangia River, a lot more sediments, pollutants such as atrazine and nitrates, therefore it required additional cleanings of our membranes, therefore more electric and chemicals. We also saw an increase in our peak flow this summer from 3.5 million gallons a day to 5.5 for some sustained periods. A lot of that was attributed to the dry weather. And just when we do have, we had a pretty dry summer compared to several past years. And we did, when we did see rain this year, it was in the intensive rain where we had a lot come down and therefore we saw additional runoff of agriculture projects, projects on our, into the river and therefore the more use of electrical and chemicals. Did want to point out, we haven't had any, we had zero violations with the new plant. We maintain our raw, our finished water hardness of 125 as we said we would. And with cleaning the membranes as we need to, we are also increasing the longevity of the membrane equipment and therefore putting off any major purchases of new equipment. I do want to point out that I have been meeting with staff pretty regularly in the last several months. We are looking at the possibilities of maybe running the generator at night during low flow periods to reduce our electrical demand and also maybe even shutting the plant off for several hours at night to decrease our electrical usage. In terms of the generator, I researched for the additional cost of diesel fuel offsets the, to decrease in electricity. And we just got to see how our water tanks react if we shut down the plant at night for several hours, why the demand is low. And Mayor, you did bring up solar panels at the water plant. We've had, had a few discussions, and I mentioned this to Tom several times, that we're looking at possibly maybe putting solar panels at the center of a well field, which requires a big amount of electricity since we put that well field in place since the new plant went online. So we are looking at those options to hopefully in the future decrease our. I can't answer any questions that come up. But we are looking at passing this tonight because we do need to make some chemical purchases this year in the next several weeks. And I know our electricity budget is about out and we'll need to. And I know our electricity budget is about out, and we'll need to pay those electricity bills.
Any questions for Brad? And what is the wish to council?
I move to suspend the rules required for reading in ordinance 17-7.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Move for adoption of the emergency clause in ordinance 17 day 7.
Second. Motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance 17 day 7.
Second. Motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mrs. Keller. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And item 20 is consideration of order 71.
Ordinance number 17-71, an ordinance supplementing the 2017 appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for administrative services wage line item.
Again, this is a first reading. Second reading will be next meeting. So we're.
Finance Director's report.
Your report through, I should say, September at the top. The end of September was included in your packet. Pretty consistent as far as budget-related issues. Would note our health insurance costs do continue to creep up within our budgeted amount, but just seeing a higher percentage increase than what we have in past years. I don't anticipate an need for a supplemental or anything like that. We do have some fairly large reimbursements coming back in. We have stop-loss coverage when claims exceed a certain amount. But, you know, costs are trending up a little bit. And our income tax collections, although up over four and a half, about four and a quarter percent from last year, we anticipated closer to five, five and a half, six percent. So that'll have a little bit of. Any questions you may have?
Any questions? Okay. City Council's report.
So a couple of items. The courthouse dedication, we put something in last week's report regarding that. There's a flag raising ceremony. I believe it's the week after next. That will be short. Then there are some open houses as well. If you have an interest in seeing the courthouse, please take advantage of that. I will be following up. I had a meeting last night with, last week with Frisana Med regarding kind of the outstanding issues with Dean. I would assume with his departure from the county, with his resignation, I'll be following up directly with John Elvin to try to get those issues addressed. And Carolyn and I, we met with Jeff Commissioner Benton, expressed our concern about the way in which that process was handled. So hopefully we'll get some resolution. I can't give it to you right now, but there are some actions the city council has taken with respect to the alley that's got to be officially designated in terms of the direction. I believe I got something from Bill Freeno about that last week, and try to resolve this parking issue, so.
So you're saying they need us for something else still, huh?
Well.
Interesting.
Yeah. Anyway, if you can get to that dedication, get to, and then the Sagan colloquium, I don't remember, how many of you remember Chris Fink, Professor Fink from Ohio Wesleyan, he used to be on our Parks Board. He's leading a colloquium on quality of life and public health. This is part of a national series that they're doing. And that's going to be two weeks, a week from this, two weeks from this Thursday at Ohio Wesleyan. I was part of a working group last week that talked about quality of life and issues of access to healthcare and various other things that will be discussed as part of that. So I'll send out a reminder or just an information about it. And I believe there is a Thanksgiving dinner that our clerk has put together a flyer about. We have a petition from Cicada coming, the students, but we also have two representatives from Cicada City Government to talk about, to be meeting with, with our staff and the mayor to talk about the next phase of our sister city relationship. So, but as part of that celebration, there was a dinner.
And the reason we're doing Thanksgiving dinners is because in Japan, there are no turkeys. So for the Americans that are in Japan, they buy out Kentucky Fried Chicken because that's the closest thing they can get to turkey. So we thought we would have a real Thanksgiving dinner for those that are coming. That's where the whole idea came from. And First Friday is all about thankful, and we're going to take the delegation down to First Friday, and then Saturday we'll do this Thanksgiving dinner. So please let us know soon if you can come or not. Okay, council comments. Mr. Jones?
What I have is to say thank you to my colleagues for the passing of the dog ordinance. It was very important to me and to obviously a lot of members of the community. Special thanks to Vice Mayor Schaefer for being able to convey the intent of unattended and attended where than I could tonight, so.
You thought it was going down. You could see the look on your face.
I was emotionally attached to that for various reasons, so I appreciate it, but that's it, thank you.
Mrs. Keller? So I'm impressed with the way that we just worked together and talked it out, and wish that we could have done that with the medical marijuana discussion. We've sort of missed our opportunity to discuss that, and I didn't really push it too hard because it didn't appear that I had any support on council. But I just want to go on record saying, if this opportunity presents itself to us again, I think that we owe it to ourselves and we owe it to our community to explore it as an economic development opportunity. And I'm talking about the location of facilities here that would be involved in the manufacture, not distribution. So should this opportunity present itself, I hope we don't miss it next time.
Okay. Mr. Brownie?
None.
Mr. Rohr?
Nothing.
Tom, did you have the opportunity to talk to Scott about our emails on our phones? If we all get new phones, what's going to happen?
I haven't yet, but I will. This is the BYO, the little disclaimer that they have to sign if they have their own device. And I know this has been a concern in the past, but I'll, I'll follow up with you in the morning about it.
Excellent.
Okay. What devices? Well, Ken got a new phone, and if he agrees to that, if something happens, he loses all of his business contacts.
First what happens is, if you want to sign on for your city, you know, an email from your phone, a little thing comes up that basically says you have to follow the password requirements, and if your phone's lost or whatever, they can turn the phone off, wipe the memory and throw all that. My concern is, I know that's a business intent, the only thing, we don't have access to the city's network. I understand why you do that, because people have access to that. We only have access to email. Our email's a public record, anybody can get that. So there's no real threat by my phone getting lost, other than to me. My concern is, if it's virtually gets wiped out, my business gets wiped out.
Right.
So I can get everything back online, which may cost them.
So why can I get on?
So we have announced the new phones because of the new system that they have.
Oh, we have.
And I need a new phone, but I don't want to do it to you.
I think you can't get into work, we have to distinguish between council has limited access, that's what I'll follow up with Scott about.
I can never use my own computer because I won't sign that form because I have to sign it saying that no one but me will use my computer, and sometimes my kids will get on there, but I guarantee they're not touching my email.
You can use a web access.
Is it from the network?
Okay. Would that look for a motion to adjourn?
See Dr. Jones.